Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order.
As required by the meetings actually, seventy-five adequate notices moving with provided on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three by publicing some notice and express claims of Huntington Democrat and by posting a set notice in your school building on the same date, Mayor Barsman.
Here.
Mister Baylor is excused. Mister Bean?
Here.
Mister Connect?
Here.
Miss McDermott?
Here.
Police may have a flag salute.
By doing it to the right, I mean, that's a state of America. And what they.
With that, don't forget Inspector today this week, remember our veterans? For all of them?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna start off. Out of order a little bit, the architect is here for the new building and I guess he's gonna get some update report or whatever on it.
Um, okay.
Joe, is that why we're here, right?
Well, yeah, we were.
Mike, did I catch you by surprise?
No, I, yeah. Yes, quick update, we are about ready to go off the bid with the project. Uh, I sent Lisa a list of questions that we need to have resolved yet from the township. Before we go off the bid. And I'm hoping tonight that I get those answers or soon thereafter, but at that point, we'll be ready to issue this for bidding that. I'd say right now, the drawings and specifications are about ninety-nine percent.
Do we have all the answers for?
Uh, waiting on a few things from, uh, Mike, actually, he didn't send anything with me, right?
No.
I'll follow up with him till, uh, tomorrow morning if. Is that?
That's fine, yeah. Um, and the one thing that you and I talked about, Lisa, regarding the pay to play. Should it be in the bid document?
Yes.
That's not on the list, but that's something you and I talked about?
Yes.
How we handle that? And, uh, so you have all the answers for me as to how you're going to advertise it?
Yeah, I, I thought that Mike would just lay out the whole timeline for us and have those dates in advance and we can get that all set.
Okay, cuz all of those dates get placed into the back, so before I can put it out.
Yeah.
I just need to have all that information.
You're gonna send that to us in a, in like a word doc, right? And then we're gonna send it out?
Well, that was gonna be one of my questions.
Okay.
What we can do is once you advertise it, the advertisement is written right now that everybody contacts you.
Okay.
If you, and then we'll send PDFs out.
Very. That's perfect.
Okay.
I like that.
Yeah, I know. It's something we do every day.
Yeah.
Rather than you handling it because the PDFs are on the side that only everything's gonna be a Dropbox link.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we have it set up, uh, that the contractors, the main bidders would contact us via email. Um, and that we would then return via email or Dropbox link to a full bid set.
And are you able, you're able to provide it to us to post on the website as well? Like a somehow a link or do you want it just to refer them to you, have a summary and refer it to you?
On your website?
Yes.
Uh, we could put a, you can put a link on your website to my email.
Okay.
That would be perfect. Um. And then, once they email me, then I can distribute the drawing accordingly. This way, we track everything.
Yep.
Uh, everything coming in and going out via email.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's basically the last piece. That we need is the layout of how you're going to advertise, what the dates are going to be. Pre-bid conference, which we wanna hold, when are the bids due, where are they going to be due at, which I still missed here. And there'll be a public opening thereafter. The insurance is a big item. That I had asked about that, just exactly what insurance. You, the township wants to contract this to carry. We have standard form, but every municipality I've ever worked with has something a little different. So I wanna make sure that we are proceeding based on what you want.
Gotcha. Yeah, I had sent it to Mike. I'm not sure if he wants to weigh in on that or if potentially we need to get our, um, our representative involved in that as well, so I'm sure we can facilitate a conference on that tomorrow.
That'd be great, um.
So just to clarify, you'll send me the, 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 uh, announcement as you have it, and then we're gonna fill in those dates and then I'll copy it back to you.
That would be good, yeah, I can do that. Probably will be Friday afternoon, Friday and tomorrow.
Great.
Um, and we'll get.
Our next deadline's gonna be a Tuesday.
Okay.
Submission to the paper before like eleven, so.
Okay, so we can try to get all that done over, I'll do that over the weekend then.
Okay, great.
And, uh, I think that was it. We have everything else picked. The drawings are, like I said, ninety-nine percent done, the specs are done. Uh, talked to, uh, the code official regarding building permits. Uh, the, we can submit the drawings and specs as a courtesy review.
Okay.
Uh, the actual building permit submission will not agree with, we have selected our contractor. And they will have the supplemental from.
Okay.
So, but I will submit sometime within the next week for a courtesy review, in case there's anything glaring that they might, but now, we can correct before the bids are received.
Great.
Do you have the drawings? Okay, do you have any PDF or something you can send to her and she can give it us and go look at them or anything or?
Yeah.
Uh, we have the hard copy, but I think some adjustments have been made that, right here.
That work up on the computer.
I, I don't have the full cuz it was so much.
And, and the site plan has changed a little bit, so that, that there will be, uh, updated anyway, so.
The, uh, the drawings, uh, I can send to you now. I'm doing final check this weekend. Looking for anything that might be missing or corrections, so I can send them to you now, knowing that there might be tweaks. Or I can send this to you when we go off the bid.
Okay.
Which do you prefer?
Well, maybe I have a preference, but I just can't. I just like to look at everything.
Yeah, I would like that, you know, I like to get it now, so I can look at it.
I mean, yeah, we're, we understand it might be changes.
Okay, do you want the specs too or just the draw?
I, I just want the drawings.
Yeah, drawings, yeah, specs, we'll leave that up to the professionals. Who do I know about a spec?
Yeah, specs can be very boring, right?
They are.
Not can be, they are. How long does it normally go out the bid? Is it a forty-five day bid, thirty day bid?
I mean, uh, R and B or? I usually go four weeks.
Four weeks, okay.
What I try to do is four weeks, two and a half weeks, and we have the pre-construction, pre-bid conference. So the contractors can ask questions, I can respond to that in a reasonable time, so we're not sending out answers a day before the bidder due. So, and then also the Thanksgiving in here, we just wanna look at the dates to make sure.
Add two more days, yeah.
Yeah, so right now, I'm thinking if you're out, you know, you, you're gonna be out somewhere over the Thanksgiving, moving back in early December before Christmas would be ideal. Um, most contractors do not like putting bids out over the Christmas holidays, so we wanna try to get it out in before that. Makes sense?
And if everything goes well, anticipation of when the shovel goes in the ground?
I would say with all the.
Early spring?
Spring, yes.
And how long is the build?
I have estimated three hundred days, ten months.
Ten months?
Wow.
Okay, so early next, in twenty twenty-five?
Or maybe December thirty for me. Yeah.
Well, that depends on weather too.
Depends on weather, absolutely.
And, and Danny, just because you do this all the time, I know two and a half years ago, first, did a lot of chop talking and such. You had built in roughly about a ten percent over and above what you thought at the time, cuz that's what we bonded for.
Yes.
Is, is that number somewhat accurate now? Have things come down?
Uh, nothing comes down.
Come on, I've heard some things come down.
Yeah, wood has come down.
Right.
Steel has gone up. Uh, electrical equipment is still in short supply. Luckily, our building does not have anything sophisticated in terms of large amount of electric, large switch gears. Uh, we're running into some projects that delivery on electrical switch gears fifty-two weeks.
Wow.
Fifty-two weeks?
Fifty-two weeks. Now, because of what your building is, yeah, your building is, I don't see this as being an issue. And what we do is, what we normally do is, once we get the bid in and we have, uh, vetted the contractors. We'll immediately sit down on the first day that they sign a contract and what is a lone lead item and how can we get it ordered as quick as possible? So, uh, back to your question though, I think drywall has leveled off. We're still seeing some inflation and everything. Wood has definitely come down. And like I said, steel is up, uh, masonry is pretty much leveled off, so I would say not that much has come down, but we're seeing a leveling. We're not seeing the inflation that we saw over the past two years.
Anything else still for you?
No, I know we talked about the sign and we're probably gonna do alternate, right, bid for that, and we're gonna probably need a variance compared to the township's out, sign or the. Right now, the, the estimating, and I sent the spec to Rich and Lisa there, I think he's got it now a week to go. It's gonna, it'd be, what is it?
Well, the.
Ten by, ten by six?
Six by ten LED sign plus then the name of the township above that. And, uh, so yeah, uh, forty, so going over everything with comment, looks like we're gonna have to file for a variance on that sign, so we're, we're gonna put the spine in as an ad alternate. In case we have to change something, you'll never get your full money back after the bids are in, so we'll keep it as an ad, we can delete it and then bring it back in later in the right format, so.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question. What about the sign? Cuz this town definitely needs a sign.
I'm sure, we, we need a sign.
Yeah, so we do have a sign, it's then designed. Joe has, you have a Lisa? So.
I heard you, Bill. I heard you.
So that will be in the bid document as an add-on.
It'll be electronics sign, right?
Yeah, LED, LED electronic.
That Lisa can control. From the, or somebody, you know, Tammy, or from home, yeah, well, you know what, it's probably from the phone, you know?
That I would like to do.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's good.
Lisa, I gotta sign a date you gotta do right now at ten o'clock at night on a Saturday night.
The only other thing I could put in there is, I know the water company and the other cable and electric utilities were out marking front of Thomas Stewart Park, so I guess the gas company must've got okay. For the gas line to run to the property. When they're gonna start, usually they mark it out at the end of last week. What's that, seven to ten days the, the window is, but bunch of regular.
They normally wouldn't call unless they were getting close to being ready to do the work, so that's, that I would say, yeah, probably.
I know the application went in August twenty-two, so they filed.
Those little flags about to mark them. Aren't they required to take them down when they're done? Yeah, I mean, cuz the homeowner is afraid to take them down, like up on Maple Drive, there's people's joints for a month and a half, two months now. Their price is gonna.
The reality of the eight-one system, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but after the contractor has left the job, the job's considered complete when the hole's closed up, they can be removed.
Oh, yeah.
They have to.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, but I mean, the homeowner doesn't know that, I think, they are, they require it, there's when, when the work is done, the hole's filled, they should have to take them flags with them.
Yeah, they, they called, they've called me and says, come get your flags out of my yard, and I said, not my flags, I don't.
Yeah, I, I, when I see that, I don't, you know, they, they cover all these laws, I mean, how simple is that to say, and when you're done, take it with you.
Yeah, right.
I mean, you know.
So one more question for you. I was in Somerville today and they got the steel up on their new, uh, police and, and I think it's fire or rescue. And their bid was originally thirty-one million, and it's up, I think, close to forty-three million. What are you thinking that? You know, what kind of guess them in on our project?
Six?
Okay.
I got twenty thousand square feet, three hundred dollars a square foot, somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay.
Oh, and you will file for the prevailing wagerings?
Correct.
That would be the other thing before you go off the bid, I need to have those.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think Mike's, uh, on that. I'll make a note though.
Okay, yeah. Traditionally, I know we've always filed for that, but I can't do that in New Jersey. We, owner must file for that.
Paul, you have any, no, no, Bill?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mike, you, um, Rich, you have any, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting October nineteenth or regular meeting October nineteenth?
I'll make the motion.
Any questions, comments, violations, corrections? Roll call?
Mayor Barsman?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Bean?
I guess.
Mister Connect?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Looking for a motion to accept the tax collector's tax assur reports for October.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any questions, comments?
These people.
Roll call?
Mayor Barsman?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Connect?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yeah.
Looking for, I'll make the motion to accept the treasury report for the October bill, listen to him, tell us, anybody want to second?
Second.
Anybody have any items they need pulled, questions, comments, deletions?
Uh, I could have, oh, uh, where is the? Amount for the Board of Education for the month of November? It's, it's not here. We have a one-point-three million dollar.
It's not on the regular?
It's not on any that I saw, you know? It's the only bill, it was the one that she emailed last week, and then that was the only one that I saw that was in the packet, so. So if we approve this, we're not approving a bill, uh, from the school.
Now, she's gotta pay it, so.
Right, 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 yeah, so.
Unless it was on, uh.
And it's a fixed, same, pretty much a fixed amount, so we, you know, I thought I saw it on last month, so I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, it could be that she had, uh, the two months so that she could cut the checks at once, though, I'm not sure.
All right.
That's for the record, the school will be paid.
Everybody else? Roll call?
Mayor Barsman?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Connect?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yeah.
Police Department report, October twenty twenty-three. Pete, you have any, you wanna add to the, uh, written report?
Uh, yes, I just, uh, I made a mistake. Our truck enforcement was actually. Sixty-eight trucks stopped, thirty-six ticketed.
Sixty-eight and what was it, thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
So. How do we go from ninety-one and eighty? Which is almost like a ninety percent ratio, so like a fifty percent ratio of, you know, uh, stop and summonses.
Bus officers, uh, were out there last month. Didn't fill us, uh, a lot of shifts, um, and another big thing was, uh, state police, they were out there, uh, stopping a lot of trucks. Um, you know, I guess, kinda taking away from our enforcement, which, uh, I'm a little problem with it, it sends.
Right.
Uh, and that was because the weigh station was closed down. Uh, it is still, I guess, closed down.
Eastbound, yeah.
Eastbound because, uh, they're doing work with, um, I think fixing a scale or, or placing a scale, so they had the concrete tore up, so. They have those troopers diverted to doing a enforcement on one-seventy-three, so.
Yeah.
It was like utilizing their, uh, timeline.
There was construction over that area too, a couple days.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to see them even more.
Yeah, they could really hammer in one-seventy-three, but I, I, I'd take great which guys out, often also sitting waiting for stuff.
Yeah, Bailey's Road residents, a couple of them asking me, you know, they're seeing a lot of trucks over there by old green and skirts and.
I saw them going in there taking the first time in a long time.
It's, it's a tough.
Running now again, right?
Tough lid.
Yeah, man.
I saw them going that way today, that's, that's the first one I've seen in a while.
And it was only a matter of time, and Paul, you might have been there, and Joe, yesterday morning. Uh, you know, the trucks, you know, if you come home like at eight o'clock at night, like coming west, you can count about a hundred trucks between. The bottom of the mountain and, and over here to exit, you know, three or four, just on the side of the road. Is there any way, and I don't wanna see you guys out there? I mean, to enforce trucks to, you know, guy lost his light yesterday morning.
They, well, I mean, the chief will have the same answer. The, the state police have stopped enforcing that when the federal government put rules onto how long the truck are.
Right, on the road, right.
So truckers need, truckers need to be able to find a place to.
But, yeah, there's nowhere to go.
There's nowhere to go.
The other law that they created where they're thinking around.
I had a conversation with the DOT supervisor over Bloomsbury, and the state's considering a facility on seventy-eight out here somewhere. A state-operated, uh, private contractor, state facility to run a truck stop.
On seventy-eight?
Somewhere almost, uh, uh, like on the parkway where they got these truck rest or something.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great idea, but.
Still that would be enough.
No, it's, well, I, I mean, just say, take that hundred and put them in the weigh station, which again, I think, why aren't they using the weigh station at now?
With a hundred trucks, with their motors running, air pollution, no.
Well, but again, I'm just saying, if you put them there, there'd be another hundred on the road anyway, because they knew that, so.
Maybe that's why they're blasting them out, and why didn't you be opening?
Put a truck stop on the top of the mountain.
Yeah. So I don't.
Okay. That it then, chief?
Uh.
Did, did we get our, the, the, the fine thing situated with the court over there in Boat? The numbers changed and all that good kind of stuff?
Uh, I think we're gonna.
It's coming up, that's coming up tonight, okay?
Yes.
Okay, DPW, Joe, you have anything to add to?
What I wanna add is that we did, we are working on Stecker Park rehab and that grant money and stuff. We've got, I got materials ordered and stuff. I wanna get that down for the winter, leave the winter set that field in, so it's ready for playing.
Are you putting a permanent mound up there?
Yes, I got, I gotta get that material there yet and everything, yes.
Okay, I haven't been up, but I heard it looks nice. Somebody told me. Okay, you done then, Joe?
That's it, yeah.
Lisa, do you have any, you wanted to add to your report? Is there anything we need to discuss for yours?
I don't think so, unless anybody has any questions. No.
Voting and code report to Paul, you have anything?
No, I looked it over and everything, I, um. I, I mean, I know Jeff summarized some things on the back and some things on the front with permits and everything like that. This is not all that's on his plate though. I mean, he has got a full plate of stuff. Yeah. And, and there's a waiting list of more to put on his plate, yeah.
And with that being said, your famous line, Paul. Should we consider increasing his hours?
I was just gonna ask.
And is he willing?
We've been discussing that for some time.
Okay.
Uh, my suggestion had been, and I had run it by Jeff, and I think he's comfortable with it as well, like, right now, to Paul's point, there's a lot going on. Um, we were talking about budgeting to allow for additional hours when he needs them and then paying him an hourly rate for those.
Right.
So that he could, at his discretion, things that come in on a Saturday and put in an eight-hour day, he could do so, and we would just budget an allotment of hours, so. That's.
So, Paul, you'll come up with something?
Yeah, yeah, we're talking about it and stuff like that. I mean, it, it eventually won't always be that way, but. There's, you, you know, you can just drive around and just see.
Oh, there's some neighborhoods that just.
Right, right, so, I mean, it, it's a, a, a two-year project probably, but, um, unfortunately, uh, uh, yeah. And, and, and I'm not blaming it all on, on lots of people just don't plan on, no.
Hmm.
You know, that you needed a zoning permit for a six-foot fence and if.
Yeah.
And, and, and if you've got a corner property, you have two front yards, you know, I mean, if this, when you buy that property, there's no place on your title that says that.
Yeah.
You know, and then all of a sudden, you know, you run into some problems like that and stuff, so. I, I mean, there's some things that are, are, have to be fixed and stuff, so, yeah, it's a project in works, but he. I'm not saying it needs to be fulfilled, John knows near that, um, but at the same rate, for six months, it probably could be, uh, you know, but, uh, yeah, he's got a, uh, his work got out for him.
Okay.
And that's only the Route fifty-seven corridor, not the rest of the town.
Okay.
Oh, so.
Clerk report, uh, no, do I have any, nothing, I don't like.
It wasn't ready cuz it's early, so.
Yeah. ACO report? Looking for a motion to accept the, uh, police department, DPW, township clerk zoning code report, report and ACO report for October. Anyone make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
And any further comments, questions? Roll call?
Mayor Barsman?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yeah.
Mister Shannon?
Yes.
Miss McDermott?
Yeah. Committee reports, uh, Lily, you have anything?
No.
Bill?
Um. I talked to, uh, Tina before the, uh, the election stuff about the. Uh, contract for the lease, and she said, uh, cuz I guess we're gonna meet with their building and grounds committee, but they were more involved with the election hearing of the, uh. Of the referendum, so hopefully, when I go in two weeks, they'll have that resolved.
What's the lease for?
The field.
The ball field?
The ball field, yeah.
Have you ever, has that ever been brought up and discussed with open space about putting baseball fields at Thomas Stewart Park? Cuz if we're gonna have another month to go, at least, at least I'd get some info from open space on that.
Okay, we can, uh.
Cuz I, if you're gonna put money into those two fields, it's down, so I think they went down to a five-year lease.
You, a, a five of the five-year renewal.
So you're gonna dump money in there in five years, what if they say we want you out? And you have that money tied up, you know, are we better off looking into, I mean, I know ball fields are expensive, but I, I like to get the input from open space. And Ryan was here, I asked him to check with Rec too, but actually, we might be seeing them Friday night anyway, so I'll.
Right.
And, and Joe, what's your thoughts?
I was just gonna.
Do you think it's better to put them in Thomas Stewart Park, or do you think it's better to keep them in there?
The overall master plan I've drawn up had a design for four, five of them, was it, Mike? Baseball fields up in the.
It wasn't originally. No. I don't know about that many, but I thought there was a couple in the.
Well, okay. The idea of baseball fields at Thomas Stewart Park has, has. Gone round and round and round over many years. Joe, you're probably thinking of some concept plans that we had done that definitely show baseball fields, however. When the park, really, when the money was, uh, uh, made available for the park and that we got down to like the final concepts and so forth. It was clear as a bell that the, the, well, I'll say the open space committee, also the township committee at the time predates some of you guys. Um, no baseball. No baseball fields and no baseball fields.
Well.
And I, right, I'm just.
Right along. I was here, and the reason there were no baseball fields, so why we're discussing it here, Mark Fornacari was here and he was head of Rec at that time. And they said, "Baseball population is down, we do not need fields." No one was vehemently against baseball fields, was portrayed to me that there was no need for baseball fields. I, I never got the impression that anyone said, "Never have baseball fields there," that's how I think.
Oh, no, well, okay, no, no, never say no.
Well, I mean, that's why I thought you tried to say that.
The, 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 it was.
There was no baseball fields because they didn't need them, is what we.
Well, no, but, but there was also the issue, Bob, if you remember, of the backstops and fences associated with a baseball field would.
Detract.
Flutter, detract the beauty of the park.
I don't ever remember that discussion.
Oh, well, no, no, I.
Might have been with one of the subcommittees, but I don't remember that discussion.
No, okay, no, it definitely happened.
Soccer goals and.
No, you guys were in the concept with open space and rec and all that, but here, that was never.
Well, ma, uh, boy, there were so many, how many meetings did we have?
Oh, yeah, I'm saying, so I, I don't argue that that wasn't discussed.
So.
It, Bean, go ahead.
No, 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 I, I. I understand Mike's thought about the fence, but soccer goalies and, not that it got built, but a bouncing wall?
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I put that right up there with the backstop and the fence.
I do know, I do know after the park was built. When there was discussions over, I do know there was discussion, after the park was done, there was a discussion about basketball courts and stuff. Then there was a discussion on whether, is it a sports complex or a park?
Right.
Yeah, that, that, that I do remember. But, uh, you know, but I do know, I specifically asked the question, why don't we have a baseball field? It wasn't like cuz of the beauty of the park or backstop. It was cuz we don't have enough kids playing baseball. That was definitely part of it. I remember Mark coming here.
And now the girls' softball has exploded and girls' lacrosse is.
The baseball's up again too, boys' baseball.
It's booking there, so, but, uh, Joe.
Would there have to be a lot of excavation to get a flat field for a baseball?
No, you got the upper level up there and the back on the back hill, you need a couple baseball.
Yeah, we do have the space, yeah.
I, I think so, really, I do.
We definitely have space.
So when you, when you're talking backfield, I mean, is it towards the school?
You're standing at front, up on the left side, so it'll be up behind the municipal building, up, up in that area there. We can't go straight back because that's our natural flow of water. And, and the lower part of the fields in the back there act as our detention area.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that I want baseball field, I'm asking for input from you.
Right, yeah, we'll get it from you.
They both come back and say, no, then I, you know.
One issue I know we have at the school is the parking issue there.
Yeah.
As well. I know a lot of people park on that grass in there, and in the spring, when it's real wet and muddy, they're making, they're making ruts and, and some cars are getting.
I mean, I just think it's something.
Same issues there.
I don't, I don't know what our terms are with Bailey's Road, I mean, that, that's a lease, so I guess.
Oh, Bailey's Field, yeah.
Somebody came in, I guess, said we want our.
At least it's been voided for a hundred years.
Yeah, so I mean, so you can lose those at any time.
Right.
You have Stecker, where would you put baseball fields if you didn't go to Thomas Stewart Park? Cuz that's the, uh, next question. I don't know where else we would ever go. If there is another location, why don't we look into that instead of?
Well, you do have several other, well, at least two locations that come off the top of my head.
Where?
Maybe one right. Maybe one right next to the squad building.
That's a flood plain, so you'd never be able to put the backstops up there.
I don't know that that's.
That passes water.
Right, yeah, yeah. And the other place is. Uh, Doug Beatty. Corner fifty seven and North Main Street. Uh, we don't, he was always hoping one day, he donated that with the idea that it was gonna become a park of some sort. Um, so there's space there.
Yeah, we could look into that.
Yeah.
So just bring it up, I mean.
Fifty seven and North Main?
Fifty seven and.
I'm just figuring if we have another month for this lease.
We're both street from the gas station, right?
Yeah.
Might as well talk about it.
The Amy problem.
The, oh, Amy, Doc Amy, that's who I, I put Baby, Doc Amy, right, right, yes. The only problem that I would see is the entrance would be on fifty seven, not North Main Street. And I could see how that could be a little problematic.
Especially as close as it is to the, the signal, yeah.
Right.
You almost wanna put the, the entrance, if it's possible, on North Main.
Main, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because the county's so much easier to work with.
Well, no, that's gonna be changing.
Hey, how's that coming along? We'll do that in your report.
Okay, remind me to mention, it's not in my report.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Bill? Paul?
No, um, just a real quick note that, uh, I know that we've been talking about the transitions that the rescue squads have been making and. And Patton Bird helping us out and all that good kind of stuff. Uh, the squad, uh, uh, again, using on their own dollar, they're eventually working to get licensed. To put licensed E M Ts here, but it's not a twenty four seven. Option at this particular time, it, it would just cost too much money. But for probably the next five to six months. They're spending, you know, and obviously some, there's some town stipend money, but they have their own, uh, pool of money that they're gonna put an E M T. In the building, hopefully five, if not six days a week, or ten to twelve hours a day, to, even if they can't crew up. Using the fire department or whatever, to at least do a lot of first responding. You know, getting an ambulance there within a couple of minutes of that. And on a side note, and it's really too early to have big conversations on it, one hundred county paramedics. Are looking at our building to station there. You know, we're gonna entertain conversations with them, building bedrooms and an office and such. Uh, I think that, that's a win-win for the, the town.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and even should the squad two years from now not survive, that would be a great transition.
Right.
Right.
Uh, for that building to become the paramedics, although with that being said, I also hear that Atlantic is close to buying out Hunter in any way.
That I haven't heard.
Yeah, there's some serious chatter about it. Uh, but that's a good thing, you know, I mean, Atlantic has gotten huge and everything, that's not.
Atlantic, that's, that's Moorestown, you know, so.
Everything north of us is all Atlantic, right? So anyway, so there's a couple of, uh, uh, the things that at least are going to make. A immediate first aid a, a lot faster than it's currently being done.
Yep. Anybody else, Ben, good? Professional words, Mike?
Okay, well, let's start with what we just spoke on briefly a minute, a minute ago. Um, the reason I said, made my comment about things are changing, I say that because tomorrow, and we just finished. What we were needed to do this afternoon. They are accepting bids, proposals from professionals for, uh. That what they're calling is temporary staffing. So in other words, to hire some consultants to do, to help out the engineering department and planning department. So I think that's certainly a step in the right direction towards moving things forward, getting things done a little faster. Maybe even a little differently. I, and I deal with Alex's Orsa a lot, I talk to Alex almost every day. Uh, and he really understands and wants things to change. He doesn't like the reputation, he doesn't like. Everything he hears about the complaints, so I think it's gonna take some time, but the, it. It's clearly heading in that direction to do business a little differently, so. Yeah, then it's not happening like overnight, but. All right. I only have really two things, basically the same item. First off, Beatty's Road, which, I know I told you something a little different last month because I didn't think it was gonna happen. But Beatty's Road is going to be paved next week. I know Donna, our Donna was with Joe, right Joe, we're ready to go.
And you got to catch basic Sunday, and you said you, you needed.
All, all of, we finished up, they took the forms off last one today, all we gotta do is put curb units in, which is, we could be, do that after the paving's done.
Yeah, it's, fifteenth is gonna be when they mill, which I think is Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Thursday.
And then, yeah, Wednesday and Thursday, milling on Wednesday, paving on Thursday. We've got the two grants we have total of two hundred and forty four thousand and forty dollars. So, uh, but that's a good thing, we'll get that done and we'll get that off the books and also get. Get a nice check from the D O T. Uh, and on the same vein, uh, we were awarded another grant for next year. Uh, now, it was only for seventy thousand dollars and only. So, I mean, we'll deal with this next year, we'll talk about it and so forth.
What did we, wait?
That was Willow Grove Road, the section between where they stopped with the Water Main resurfacing. To basically the Franklin boundary line, so it's not that much of a road.
Right.
Because then the continuation of Willow Grove Grove Road in Franklin is going to be repaved. In conjunction with the Water Main Project. Um, in Franklin. Uh, so, and, and Franklin got a grant for a section of Good Springs and, um, Willow Grove. So. It's, so they're all told between Franklin Water Main Project and the two D, the two D O T grants, the Franklin Grant and the Greenwich Grant. That's gonna pave and take care of a lot of roads in that vicinity, so. And that's, that's.
If you've done at the same time as Franklin's or Portion?
Probably not, because Frank's is gonna have to be coordinated around the water job, yeah.
Are those four homes on Willow Grove?
Yep.
Water?
Yep. That, they were the ones that discovered it originally.
Okay.
Yeah, they're definitely, yes, they're, they're at every meeting. Yeah.
When they did South Main and Maple, I'm like the typical old guy now, I sat on my porch with my coffee and watched.
When did you south main it? What porch did you just?
My house, Maple.
Oh, Maple, okay, I'm thinking Maine, you said, okay, okay.
I can't believe how fast milling machines go now and how fast the papers go.
Yeah, yeah, they move.
They go, yeah, I mean.
The biggest slow job is getting the material.
Yeah.
That's what slows things up.
They went through seven trucks. They, that paper goes faster than they can get trucks there.
Right, yeah, yeah, you gotta, you gotta.
Well, I don't know who did Maple and stuff like that, we didn't get the A team up here on North Main Street.
Because they, they got, they got hung up a little bit at one seventy three in Maple doing intersections, it took them a long time. In the meantime, set, is it at least seven or eight tandems came full of blacktop. And when they started.
They go.
I can't believe how fast the paper goes, you know, compared to what they used to, and even the milling machine.
No, they, they rip up a lot of, a lot of road.
My wife, they're looking at me saying, boy, when was I was that guy? You know, I felt like going to, it's not as great as it looks.
No, I thought you were gonna say, we got your, I'm the mayor's son. I shouldn't retire, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm getting used to it, but it's, you know, it's funny because, you know, when you're working, you look at people and say, that must be nice deal, so.
Yes, you do.
It's not as great as it sounds.
Uh, that, that's my, that's all I have for you.
Okay. Okay, and you don't have any?
I have no report.
Okay. Old business, I wanna, let's see, we needed to authorize Lisa to contact the chaplain to write the specs, right? That's just a resolution or we just, just do, we just don't need to do anything to authorize? We gotta get the specs written between you and Joe and Dan, right? For, for the sewer pump station.
Well, the, a generator and also we're gonna start thinking about a sewer line for the new facility, we're going out the bid too. What, what are we doing?
We're gonna be going to the sewer to the new building?
I thought that was.
I thought, I thought, I thought last we heard it wasn't allowed. We couldn't do it.
Why?
Because it was not enough gravity pull, I thought.
I, I, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, it would have to be a forced main, but a forced.
Oh, okay, well.
And I think they, the original estimate was a lot and they, they dropped that.
Okay.
So we need to, there was, there, because there's no septic design on this building because I was under the question, we were doing either gravity or.
Yeah, I told you we were forced out. Oh, yeah, I remember we talked about one, but I thought that wasn't doable.
Well, there was one that was eight hundred and fifty thousand that wasn't doable, and another route that was like two hundred and forty nine thousand or something like that.
Significantly.
Okay. Do we need to say, do we need to authorize you to work with them or can you?
Sure, I mean, I, it doesn't hurt to do a motion on the record to authorize that Joe and I.
Yeah. I'll make the motion that we authorize Lisa and Joe to work with Dan to come up with specs for the source pumping station. And to start, start design on the building. Finally, further questions, comments, discussion?
Um, well, it's not septic.
Roll call. Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
And now I'm looking for a motion to authorize me to sign the selling documents. For the Dumont property to, uh, for the affordable housing, because I have to, yeah, I have to sign the deed. The affidavit of consideration, the closing agreement, all that, Lisa and I both, so I'm looking for a motion to authorize us to sign this document.
I'll make that second.
Any further questions, comments, discussion?
I see two big, uh.
Yeah, the truck showed up.
Yeah, I did see, yes.
I got all kinds of phone calls.
Yeah. Getting calls, emails and.
What are they there for? I said affordable housing, you know that, I know that.
I let Beth know, you know, board president.
Uh, Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith and the guests, closing is scheduled for Wednesday.
New facility, we don't need anything on, we just went through that, right? New business, anybody have any new business?
Uh, yeah, an introduction of ordinance, uh, introduction of ordinance by title, uh, ordinance one fifteen, uh, dash twenty twenty three. Uh, it's titled ordinance of the Township of Greenwich County, uh, Warren, state of New Jersey, to amend, revise and supplement chapter seven. Entitled traffic, uh, amending the title to trucks over four tons and twenty tons. G V W R, gross vehicle weight rating, uh, for excluded from certain streets to amend weight ratings and add penalties.
So we introducing that with an ordinance?
That's. Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we, uh, introduce that, uh, ordinance and.
One fifteen.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? That's to tighten up the law we already did and we were having issues with the way they were filing, setting.
Yeah, and there's language also from the county that we're, uh, syncing up with the way the county does it.
And once this is done, then the letter will go to the court to answer your question to make sure they have the correct penalty.
Okay.
And that's for all the county votes, except for all.
Based for county and non-county.
Any other question? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith and the guests.
And a new business, we need to, uh, just make a motion, make a motion to allow the squad to have the coin toss downtown. Right, there doesn't have to be a resolution, right?
No.
I make a motion, we authorize the, uh, emergency squad to do the coin toss. Down here at the clicker line, right?
No, this is the one.
Any questions, comments? Paul, you want to make any comments on? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yep.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith and the guests.
Looking for a motion to adopt resolution eighty twenty three, the safety and secure grant. Resolution twenty eighty one twenty three, it's a refund of tax overpayment, resolution eighty two twenty three, uh, tax lien redemption. Everybody wanna make a motion to adopt? Uh, second, any questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
With the beam?
Yes.
Mr. Kenny?
Yes.
I make a motion, we open up public hearing, ordinance number one fourteen twenty twenty three, amending zoning cannabis. Carried, I'm told it'd be, oh, we're carrying now, right, we're not doing that tonight.
So, yeah, just by, I left it on the agenda, but by way of explanation, it's just timing because we had our meeting early and Land Use Board meets tomorrow.
So the second reading will be next month?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, twenty twenty three best practices event tour, we have anything on that?
So I can summarize, I think we needed a minimum of twenty nine, uh, yes answers this year in order to be in, you know. Good standing and get our full state funding, and I believe we landed at thirty seven. Um, and we still had some questions out there that we didn't have time to get answers to, which I also think would have been yeses, so I think that just, um. Example that we're in good shape in terms of, uh, those state plans.
Bowling places, we kinda started talking last meeting, which we should have talked about, but. I, I had asked Lisa to contact the elections at least to see if, who, who, we have to go and ask those. Places that they would take the voting backwards, he handled that.
It would really be handled by Bill Duffy.
Yeah.
Unless he asks for my assistance, but I don't think that he would.
I really, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with, actually it was twelve hundred voters, so, yeah, twelve hundred people going to the school. I mean, all year long, we preach school security, we're trying to hire S R O for the school, and then we open the building up to twelve hundred. People, and you really don't know who's gonna walk in with those twelve hundred people, so it, it's a breach, I think. And then there became some issues internally up there about opening the gates, closing the gates inside and stuff, and I, I just. I know I voted for it and I, I, I really regret that vote now, but if we could move it back. I, I would think we should move it back. I thought about moving it here to the fire department, but. I think there's enough room to vote in there, but there is no way parking will be handled if we got twelve hundred people here.
Another suggestion that came in, uh, from several people at, you know, I understand at the bowling place was, why can't we use the library? Since early voting is handled there already.
Another question, well, I, I guess I'm, what I'm asking for is, anybody have any problem with us having her do this, I mean.
No.
Are you happy with where it was at and the way it was or?
Yeah, just say that we're concerned about, we, you know, you know, twelve hundred people and next year is probably gonna be over two thousand.
I mean, we ultimately, I think we've discussed, we wanna get it into the new building.
Right, right.
If it happens, even as, we're looking in twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's another, so for twenty twenty four.
Well, and you're not gonna be able to put all four districts in the new building, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, I think we're still gonna need, but you know, we could use this building then.
You could, right.
So, uh, but I, I, I really would, so anybody have any objections to us asking her to find that information out? You want me to motion, I really seem to be good with that discussion.
I really thought we did it because we thought it was gonna be also more cost efficient, but I agree with you. It's not, it wasn't a good idea.
Yeah. So. I, I was hesitant at the time, I think I even made a comment about.
Well, I would just let.
I worked to get them out of this.
Let Duffy know that there's gonna be a spring referendum, maybe March or April, whatever the town, the state allows, whatever, I don't know what month that is, I thought it was April. Could be March.
We discussed the lease agreement and base, but correspondence, Lisa, have any we need to hear or?
I don't think there's any, unless anybody has any questions.
Yeah, there's one from this gentleman here, uh, Scott Durin.
He's been in touch with us, um, a few times and, you know, essentially he, the only thing that he has asked of us is if we had. A layout of, you know, the site plan and where the sewer connection was, you know, potentially gonna be made. So that he can reach out to them directly, so it, it doesn't really affect us. Um, he just wants to cut a, pony up, you know, coordinate with them.
Recently? This was in my packet, yeah. You have the same letter, like three months?
Very similar.
Been similar a couple of months back.
I think he reached out to Mike's office and Mike suggested he send a letter, probably not realizing he had sent one previous, but it's the same, same subject. Nothing.
We have, wait, do you have anything we need to go with executive?
I don't have.
Do we have anything, exactly, anything we can discuss with executive?
No. I don't think so.
Public comment, I'll make a motion, we, oh, I'll make a, I'll make a motion, we'll open public comment, second. All, all favor, hi, Joe?
Yeah, Mayor, I forward about a resolution for fire department to, uh, get that, apply for the grant. Seventy five thousand dollar, uh, New Jersey, uh, American.
Yes, you did.
Rescue plan, if we could get that, because if not, we don't have the meeting, I need a town ordinance to use to say, this also allows us to use the save system.
Right.
We're gonna.
Order it's a resolution.
I, I sent the sample.
I thought it said resolution in the email, but it.
Yeah.
Yes, a resolution.
We can name that eighty-three twenty-three.
Okay.
I'll need to give that to our grant writer, it has to be attached to the.
What's the wording on that research? Resolution eighty-three twenty-three, what, and the resolution authorized. The fire department to use our Sage?
Uh, to apply for the American Rescue Act. Physical year.
I'm gonna make the motion that we adopt eighty-three twenty-three, go, Joe. It's a good resolution to facilitate them to even apply for the money, they need the resolution to get on to fill out the forms thing.
Just to get onto the.
System to apply.
Bob, there is one other matter while Joe's looking for that, um, you guys had asked us to.
Well, we have the motion on the floor, did anybody second it?
I seconded, this is for, to open up public.
I just had your motion, every second.
I seconded, do you open?
No, no, this is for his ordinance.
Oh. He's, yeah, she's.
You seconded for public comment.
No. Did we have a second for public comments?
We have a motion for eighty-three twenty-three, not a second yet, okay, half second.
Yeah, I, I just put it in there as a revelation for the uh. Physical, physical year two thousand twenty-four, American Rescue Act Plan, uh, due through New Jersey Department Community Affairs.
So in essence, it's what we said, it's authorized him to use this. Uh, computer program to get the money, so. Anybody have any questions, comments, roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes. Anybody else in the public wanna make any comments, question?
Um, I just wanted to, uh, our dealership in November, the police department, we're giving it this year for um. Area Marine little girl that's got acute leukemia in Hillsburg. And uh, money donated is going to go to the uh. Book P B A fifty-six and East and Lopec, or Hillsburg and Lopec on, or them gonna uh in charge of uh getting the money out to that family.
So, thanks for that, Joe, see ya, anybody else? I'll make a motion, we close public comment?
Okay.
All favor? Bill, you had something? Or you were just talking about public comment?
You're just talking about public, yeah.
Anybody else have anything else? Like that, I guess.
Just wanted to mention about the resiliency uh grant that you guys asked Joe, Rich and I to meet about, um, we. Reviewed the application, we collaborated on some draft responses and just information that would be important. And we kinda have two options, but we do need to make a decision tonight, um, regarding that, I, I think. Rich is grant writer that works with the police department and willing to look at it and uh work with us, I guess she's now available, I think her availability opened up. This week, right, to potentially work on. Um, she would, she would do that, I, I guess, free of charge and help us through the process. I, I also reached out to C G P N H because they. Uh, I understand have a very good grant writing team, and we got an estimate for uh fifteen thousand dollars for them to write the same grant.
And what's this grant for?
Well, it's a resiliency grant that uh came across, and uh Joe thinks we have, you know, in terms of um of application. Applying for the police and fire portion of the municipal complex, potentially get a grant toward that. Uh, grant awards can be up to five million dollars, so. It's fifteen thousand dollars, that's not gonna be taken lightly, but um, you know, it is a five million dollar award potentially.
Do they get paid based on whether we get it or not, do they get paid?
Right.
Yeah, they broke it down based upon hours, you know, their hourly rate, but they were estimating that. That's what it would take, um, do you wanna say anything, your conversation with the grant writer and? And she?
Yeah, she's, uh, she has never worked with that grant before, but that's what she does, started on business, uh, writing grants for uh. Multiple uh townships, agencies, what have you, and uh she said it didn't seem like a, a big deal. Uh, she was gonna contact, uh, now, what, is that from D C A?
Yes.
Yeah, so she was going to uh, she was having a meeting next day with D C A to uh get some information about them. She was gonna open a, a uh. Township or, or I should say, uh, police department, by department that received this grant in the past, to see how it um looks. And uh go from there, I mean. I'm uh grateful she'll help, she helped me get this school grant for two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand, she helped me with the license figure grant for. Uh, hundred and thirty thousand, um, so I think it's worth uh doing instead of spending fifteen thousand. Uh, but it is, uh, it's a lot of work for uh, for all three of us to get the information, it's a, it involves grants.
This, this grant mirrors the federal government's resiliency grant that I believe is one town that you talked about where. Kane helped, that was like federal, the state created this one mirroring the federal government's resiliency grant. To help municipalities, you know, we, we're doing on fire department, police department, being in the flood plain here.
Right, right.
Facilities, and even if it becomes two-thirds of what we're putting out, then.
May anything we're putting out, you know.
Even a million dollars, because what we're talking about, we're getting close to the money that we're.
Right, so, when writing these grants, can you kinda like fluff it up with, we're close to seventy-eight, you know, if there's a. Major blizzard, I mean, it's a facility that we can open up.
That's all our takes into that, and with the ha, with our hazard mitigation plan, and the incidence that we've had in the past. Um, all play part of that, that's, that's where that comes with.
Okay.
Also, how many townships would be even doing it, I mean, we have one. And look how many years it took us to even start.
Yeah.
To even discuss it, so it could be one of maybe four or five, maybe one of ten. We, we would have a better chance if it were less.
Well, one, one thing that we have in our pocket where we didn't have in years, we have a shovel-ready plan. That's a big deal.
It's a big.
That's there, if we were just starting this process and didn't have the money, didn't have a plan.
Right.
We're ready to go out the bid, and this application has to be in by mid-December. Timeline is all in place.
Information they need. We just didn't wanna, you know, make the decision about uh, you know, whether or not to utilize her to grant writer, but she does have a great track record and has.
We would have to get moving, because we have to have that um, that public meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There is a requirement for a public.
I don't know what the timeframe is, do advertise to have that or what have you?
It's a pretty quick turnaround, we definitely have time, I think we were looking at like the first, or the second week in December, we thought that would have to be. The turnaround time is pretty quick, and it, and it, I think the requirements for it are, you know, minimal, we could have it here, middle of the day, you know, we could.
Is that something they would have to, they would have to vote on right now to have a public meeting for that?
Do we have to authorize you to advertise?
Yeah, I mean, we should, we should cover it all now, so that we don't have to have a, a special meeting.
What motion is needed, the motion to.
Do you guys want us to uh go with C G P N H, or go with, what, what is her, I mean?
Georgine Trinkle.
Yeah, I think you're saying Georgine, right?
I think so, and Joe?
What's that?
You're comfortable with?
Oh, we need a grant writer, so no matter who it is.
The use of Georgine Trinkle for the uh, have grant application, anybody want a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments?
How quickly do we have to pay her that fifteen thousand dollars, is it like?
No, I think that's.
She volunteered at the time, right?
I'm in favor.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
I make a motion that we authorize Lisa to advertise a public hearing, a, a public uh notice for that if necessary.
Dates to be determined by Lisa.
Determined by Lisa, anybody want a second?
Second.
We could, that's it, we could just do it all, all favor.
Yeah, we'll speak to her and uh get an email out to everybody with those dates and stuff, and post it on the website and get public comment back. Positive public comment actually helps us with the grant, so we wanna make sure that, oh, okay, we're aware.
Invite some positive people.
Right.
See you there, Mike.
Okay, really good. Uh, Joe, as a side note, something slightly different, only because when they mentioned King. The township have a lot of dead ash trees that the township is responsible for?
Hmm, only a couple, a stacker.
By nothing along any of the side of the roads or?
We don't own trees alongside the roads, they're property owners, only, only on path if we own that town property.
The only reason I ask is, uh, King's office has grants available.
Yeah.
Uh, for ash trees to be removed.
We, we have a right of way, but we don't own the.
No, we don't.
I've had a lot of people say, you gotta come trim your trees, this is, no, they're not my tree, I'm trimming them off from over my road. Because imaginary lines up there, but we don't own the tree where it's rooted.
Okay, nothing that we wanna put in a little.
I got one out in that detention park.
Yeah, I see you had the one, right.
That's out in there, out of the weeds, yeah.
I, I, I'll just kinda look into it just to see, are they breeding something that they wanna get rid of, these ash trees?
No, there's a worm.
There's, there's camera ashworm, is devastating the ash trees.
Hmm.
All over the United States, it's just not an eastern United States problem anymore, it's all over, so. It's been going on now for probably five, six, seven years, give or take.
Anything else?
Yeah.
I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn?
Make it. Motion?
Kind of motion, anybody second?
Second.
All favor? Thank you, see you next month.